Welcome you to the May 24th New Bern Board of Alderman Meeting. And at this time tonight, the prayer is going to be given by Alderman Taylor.
Thank you Mayor, let us pray. Almighty God, you who have designed and created the heavens and there, you who have placed your image upon us, that we seek knowledge and wisdom, beauty and truth. We should ask that today, you will grant us the presence of your spirit as we begin, bring forth your will. Rejoice in your presence, amen.
Which do I pledge allegiance to, flag of our country? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Mayor clerk would you call the roll?
Alderman Blackiston?
Here.
Alderman Taylor?
Here.
Alderman Schabel?
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw?
Here.
Alderman Kinsey?
Here.
Alderman White?
Here.
Alderman Odom?
Here.
Okay, everybody's present?
Yes Mayor, if I can, I'd like to amend the agenda to add recognition of a special group that we have tonight. At this time, we want to add them at this point on the agenda.
Okay, do you have a second to that motion?
Second.
All in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the same, the motion carries. Now, would you like to go ahead and do that?
Yes sir, thank you very much. Tonight, everyone is special, but we have a special group of people with us today, young people. And young people are our future, our tomorrow. So I love to recognize and I love to honor and show privilege that that's why we here, for you all. And for you all to come out here tonight shows us that you're concerned about your well-being and the city. At this time, we're going to ask Assistant Scout Master Tim McKenzie to step forward to the podium.
Mayor Alderman, Community District of New Bern. We are again from Troop 97, which is basically out of Beech Grove, United Methodist Church, off of old Washington Post Hill. And we have three youth that are here today. And they're working on what's called Citizenship in the Community, Merit Badge is what they're working on. Again, as the name implies, they want to simply see how a community, in this case, the city of New Bern, how we function, how we operate. And again, this is a great opportunity for them to see the inner workings. And honestly, gentlemen and ladies, I think a big takeaway piece of this for them is to realize that a community like this, it doesn't take a lot of people to make a difference. It only takes just a couple. And they can come up and voice what their desires are, what their comments are, and can possibly make a difference in the community. So again, just looking forward to watching proceedings and learning a little bit more about how we can make a difference in the community. Thank you.
Mr. McKenzie, can you introduce your troop?
I sure can. Please sit down. We have, no, Colin. Colin's working on citizenship in the community and also integrating his merit badge. We have Far Side is Austin. Yeah, working on citizenship in the community. And then we have Toby, right here on the near side. Again, our three scouts from Troop 97. Thank you. Do you have anything else Alderman Taylor?
No sir, that's fine.
Okay, at this time, we're going to go to the consent agenda, I have number three.
Nick, I'm making a motion that we accept the consent agenda as written.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Taylor, seconded by Alderman Odom, is there further discussion? Let's have a roll call starting with Alderman Blackiston.
Alderman Blackiston?
Yes.
Alderman Taylor?
Yes.
Alderman Schabel? Mayor Outlaw?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Alderman White?
Yes.
Alderman Odom?
Yes.
Okay, the motion carries. It's good, I have number five, recognition of Police Citizens Academy Participants.
Good evening Mayor, members of the board. Chief Summers will be presenting the recognition.
Good evening members of the board and mayor. I might say that I felt really warm when Alderman Taylor said everyone is special, because I feel special. And then when he said a group of young folks, I said, oh right, he's really talking about me. But it gives me great pleasure to introduce, what session is this? The 19th session of our Citizen Police Academy. And I say that often, if you think about it, policing is really, really a difficult job. And, you know, I just can't put it into words how difficult it is, the decisions we have to make, and the pressure that you're under to make those split section, second decisions. And a lot of times, those we serve don't understand decisions that we make. I think Alderman Taylor can probably agree with some of this. And I think if you look across our nation, there's a lot of rift between police and community, and government and community, and we must always remember that the police probably is the most visible part of the government. What makes, in my mind, what makes the city of New Bern so different is the willingness of the community to get involved with their police department. That makes all the difference in the world. That way, we all take the blame and we share the responsibility of keeping our community safe. Because the police, we can't do it by ourselves, we need our community. And one visible example of how our community gets involved is our Citizen Police Academy. And I'm happy to bring forth our coordinator Detective Brown, who will introduce our academy for the 19th session.
All right, before I introduce the academy, just want to give a short, brief overview of what our Citizens Police Academy is. It's basically a 10-week program where we invite the citizens in to interact with officers, learn some of our policies and procedures, so they can make better decisions about the police stories and the police actions that they see on a day-to-day basis. It really gives the officers a chance to hear some of the complaints from our citizens, and hopefully address some of those issues from our citizens, and also give the citizens a chance to meet some of our various officers and learn that we're more than just uniforms, we're more than just officers. We're also citizens inside the city as well. But the 19th session actually met from March until May 5th. And during that time, we've been elected a class president. And with your permission Mayor, I'd like to have the class president come up and give a short speech, and then we'll have you guys come down, we'll call him up, run it down and introduce him. All right, without further ado, the class president, Antonio Brown.
How's everybody doing? Thank you for having, the board having me here, and having my class here as well. Good afternoon, my name is Antonio Brown, and I am the president of this year's Police Academy. We are the class of 2016. We would like to thank you all for coming and showing your support. I would first like to give a very special thanks to the president of the Craventerius Resident Council, Sherry Midge. Thank you for your love, sweat, tears that you pour into our community. You truly are an angel to this community, thank you. I also have a few more things I'd like to say to the New Bern Police Department. Thank you for allowing us the opportunity to learn what being an officer is really about. I also would like to give a special thanks to Detective Shelton Brown, because without you spending your time and taking time out of your life to be with us and teach us, we would never learn anything. Because everything we see is always out there, never what we witness ourselves. So I thank you. Growing up, I used to hear people talk bad about police officers. And I used to see on TV and social media how they portrayed police officers to be. They always said they was overcome with power and authority. Well, I'm standing here today to let you know that that is not true. There's always more to the story. These officers take risks every day of their lives to make our citizens and keep our cities safe and communities. All the time, I hear people fussing about how it takes the police so long to get there, to the scene. But what they don't realize is that the police officers have to do everything that we have to do. They have to follow the laws just like we have to. And so it takes them longer. If they don't get the call, hey, go in hot, you know, they have to follow, they have to do speed limit just like we do. And so I thank you for letting me be able to understand that and realize that. And I asked my fellow classmates if they would have anything, you know, to say. And what they told me was that being in this class was a really big eye-opener for them, and that they really appreciate the police officers protecting us and risking their lives every day. Their job is nothing like CSI or Criminal Minds. It really does not take time, it really does take time to determine or to solve a crime. And finally, my fellow classmates, y'all are all my family. I love you dearly. We are all one happy family. All the time that we spent in this class, we learned how to work together, and we also learned how to be a family. So congratulations to you all, this is not the end, but this is the beginning. So let's continue to grow, let us take back our community. And with the help of the police department, we will attain that goal. Let's get clean, thank you.
Mayor, would I, would I like to introduce everyone? All right, we'll start our class president, thanks for that speech, Mr. Antonio Brown. Ms. Sienna Spicer. Mr. Paul Shealy. Ms. Margaret Shealy. Ms. Emiliana Nichols. Mr. Kenneth Dogg. We had two that could make it, Ms. Jessica Marshall and Ms. Courtney Garner, they could not attend the night.
Okay, thank you. Our next item is number six, consider adopting an ordinance, amending the schedule fees and charges.
Thank you Mayor and members of the board. The most recent schedule of fees and changes was adopted on May 26, 2015. Each year as part of the budget process, staff reviews the schedule for needed updates. The proposed fee changes were included in the projected revenues for the fiscal year 2016-17 recommended budget. A copy of the proposed schedule is in your packet with changes noted. And staff and I are here to answer any questions that you may have at this time.
Does the board have questions? Yes sir.
I guess Mr. Savatelli, could you just shed a little light on the methodology of how staff determines what these rates should be?
Basically, what staff ends up doing is they review the rates based on historical amounts, the time that they have involved in the activity, and some of the other costs associated with what they're charging for. They also go through a general comparison of other municipalities to see if how, what they're charging for, what they're not, and the rates that they're charging as well. And then from there, develop the appropriate fee and place it on the fee schedule.
Do you by chance have a net number of what the projected various increases will be, is the bottom line?
No, I do not, I'm sorry.
Yes sir.
Mayor Outlaw, members of the board, I know that a number of us, most of us have looked at the schedule revised charges. By and large, I think most of them are appropriate, but I do offer this comment, and I think that we need to take a closer look at them, and that simply is this, that for those citizens who are citizens that reside in the city of New Bern, I think one of the benefits of living in New Bern is that you should have access to facilities and programs at a rate that is significantly discounted against what those who live outside the city might pay for those facilities and those programs. So I think that's the one area that I think that we might take a closer look at. I know that if you went to any number of activities, whether it's golf, or tennis, or other programs, and you're not a member of that particular club or facility, you're going to pay a higher rate. Green fees, or cart fees, or whatever it may be. And I think for our citizens that are residents of New Bern, they should have a discount. So while there is some increase, I for one feel that we probably need to take a closer look at how much of an increase it is, whether it's 25% or 50% higher than what citizens of New Bern are paying. So that's one comment that I would offer on this schedule. And I would probably want to suggest that staff take a look at that for future consideration.
The only thing I would add to those comments is I think maybe at more of our workshops in the future, there are some ways to sustain the cemeteries, such as other alternative revenue sources, cremation services and things like that, that we could look at. I think that for budget purposes, $15,000 is a good start, but nowhere near the kind of money that we probably need to be spending on all of the cemeteries. So again, I think at a workshop, and I know Alderman, we have talked about this, do you have any comments on that, being in the flower business and your...
I would just say Mayor, obviously, cemeteries is probably something that most of us would have rather not been in the business of dealing with, but it's what we have. And, you know, the concern that I expressed was when you run out of land, you run out of land, and therefore your revenue ceases. That doesn't mean your maintenance and your upkeep ceases as well. So I think we probably need to start looking at a more strategic type, long-term plan and vision on how we can further keep those revenues and fertility, whether it's monolim services or like you mentioned with the urn and the cremation aspect.
Yes sir.
I have a question on the, I think this would be for Mr. Hardison. On the parks in the rec area, is it majority of the citizens of the city of New Bern is using it, or the outside coming in and using it more? How is that broken down and looked at?
We don't keep any really hard data numbers, but I can tell you that there's a widening, continued widening gap between what city residents pay for services and what non-city residents pay for services. It can vary anywhere from 25% to 60%, just depending on what it is.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions, comments about this item? It was the board's pleasure, on item number six.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion we adopt order of submitting scheduled fees and charges.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Odom, seconded by Alderman Blackiston, is there further discussion? Sienna, let's have a roll call starting with Alderman Blackiston.
Alderman Blackiston?
Yes.
Alderman Taylor?
Yes.
Alderman Schabel? Mayor Outlaw?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Alderman White?
No.
Alderman Odom?
Yes.
Motion carries, item number seven, consider adopting the budget ordinance fiscal year 2016-17.
Mayor, members of the board, our budget workshops, as you know, were held on May 3rd and 4th, and several changes were approved by the board at that time. As required by law, a public hearing was conducted on May 10th, and the board further discussed the budget following that hearing. That particular discussion resulted in no additional changes. So the changes that were voted on and approved in the, excuse me, the changes that were voted on and approved by the board are outlined in the packet in your booklet. And Mr. Savatelli and I can answer any questions you have on the fiscal year 16-17 final budget.
Board have questions, comments?
Mayor, just to make one comment regarding the revenue neutral tax rate. We do not factor in the anticipated growth that we would have seen this year. I think this is the first year that I've been in this position on the board where there's been a tax reevaluation. You can certainly see that it's not a perfect scenario. Not everyone was affected the same way. But I think with the direction staff gave, we made our best conservative effort at making sure that was a revenue neutral tax rate. But what I would like for us to be prepared to do is at the close of this upcoming fiscal year, as we're preparing our budget for next year, take a look at the actual revenues that we generate with this upcoming fiscal year, and be prepared if at all possible to make sure that that rate was revenue neutral and we didn't pick up any additional revenue, take that consideration for next year.
Okay. Other questions, comments on item number seven?
I have a question here. So I didn't get ready to come up, and before we approve this, I'd like to know, have the budget been printed yet? It's waiting to be printed before this decision is being made. Can anyone answer that for me?
Yes sir, the budget is, budget is on the city's website. Our copies have been provided to all, to the board, Mayor, Assistant City Manager, City Manager, Clerk. And we've also put it out in the library, and like I said, it is also on the city's website for everybody to visibly see, so anybody who wishes to see it can go to the city's website to see that. Once the, provided the board adopts the budget formally this evening, a hard copy will be distributed to the board if they choose to receive one, as well as the city clerk, and also place the library. Copy will also be placed on the website as well for people to visibly see.
My question, has it been printed yet? Has the budget book been printed yet?
No, it's not for the adopted budget now. Not till it's fully, formally adopted, just the recommended budget.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, other questions, comments? And what will be the board's pleasure on item number seven?
Mayor, Outlaw, members of the board, I'd like to make a motion that we adopt the budget ordinance for fiscal year 2016-17.
Second. Motion by Alderman Blackiston, seconded by Alderman Odom, is there further discussion? Sienna, let's have a roll call starting with Alderman Odom.
Alderman Odom?
Yes.
Alderman White?
No.
Alderman Kinsey?
No.
Mayor Outlaw?
Yes.
Alderman Schabel? Alderman Taylor?
Yes.
Alderman Blackiston?
Yes.
Motion carries, item number eight, consider adopting a resolution approving an audit contract for fiscal year ending June 30th of 2016.
Mayor, members of the board, the firm of Dixon Hughes Goodman performed the city's June 30th, 2015 audit and prepared the comprehensive annual finance report, or CAFR, at a cost of $39,500. Their proposed fee to perform these services for June 30, 2016 is increased to $47,500 plus $1,500 for each of the city's federal or state major programs. For your reference, the previous audit included two major programs. According to the company, this fee increase is due to a greater-than-expected scope of work when they took on the initial work last fiscal year. And then Mr. Savatelli has also benchmarked other similar municipalities and found the proposed fee to be in line with what other municipalities are seeing for audits. But staff and I are available to answer any questions you might have on this issue.
I have a question.
Go ahead, sir.
Based on a budget, you can't go basic on what another organization is doing. From $35,000 to $48,000, I mean, I don't get that. What about the company that we used before? How late or how early in the business that you sent out the proposals for this? When did you send this out?
You can send it out really at any time. We're ready to, if the board chooses to accept the contract with Dixon Hughes, we'll just, we'll execute and move forward. If the board chooses not to, we will, I'm ready to send out an RFP tomorrow morning, if necessary, to solicit bids, and we should have a response back and with audit, with an audit firm recommendation at the next board meeting on June 14th.
I mean, my personally, this is, I don't know what anyone else is thinking. But that's a big jump. What happened to the people that worked for us before?
The previous audit firm, basically a little bit history, what happened was the previous audit firm had done it for approximately $35,000, $36,000 a year in the previous, the previous three years. They came back, prior to my coming on board, they came back and provided the city manager with a fee increase of approximately $46,000, $47,000 to do the 2015 audit. And so at the time, I came on board, the city manager and I discussed it, we agreed that it was, that we should go out for bid, we issued an RFP, and ultimately Dixon Hughes Goodman were the, or she was the firm selected to do the FY15 audit. Since then, they've come back to me and felt that the scope of work was substantially greater than what they had previously, than what they were anticipating when they provided the, provided the bid, and came back to us with a, with this larger number. I have since talked to them over the last couple of days. They are willing to drop their fee by $1,000, which would make it $47,500 plus $1,500 per major program. However, they will not be, they will not be...
$1,000, that's a slap in the face to me. Tell me this, how many bids did you send out and how many did you receive?
For this year, sir, we did not send out any, we did not formally bid it out to this committee.
Did you not see that at a cost of this nature here, that what you do, didn't you think that, wouldn't you think that would be a little too much money? Wouldn't you think you would need to send out more bids than this year? Because I didn't think you would think that the board would just look at this and say, yes, this is good. You know, we put you in a position to look at to save us money, not spend money.
Well sir, one of the things that we look at related to audits is the quality of the audit that's received, and not just the fee. You don't want, don't get a car based on, just based on the price alone, you also look at the quality of the vehicle. And that is, that is one of the things that we looked at prior to deciding to go ahead and put this before the board this evening. You know, we did receive a very high-quality audit last year, the financial state, they do prepare the financial statements for us. And we felt that the quality of the financial report provided to us with very, next-to-no errors related to that report was very, was very high-quality, good scope of work. So that's why, like I said, that's why we decided to provide it to the board this evening, and we're willing to take whatever direction you all provide us.
But my thing is, again, you know, it wasn't enough proposals put out to be able to make a selection. You know, that's just my take, I don't know, I can't speak for no one else, only myself.
Mr. Savatelli, when we bid this in 2015, do you remember kind of the range of bid prices that came back, or responses?
We received, we received three bids for the 2015 audit, which was part of the reason why we were looking to stick with this firm. We were only, again, we were only receiving three bids. We received one with approximately $27,000, ranging from $27,000 up to slightly higher than the original bid on this, on this audit. If somebody will make a call... As somebody who may recall, the, the original bid came in approximately $36,000. The auditors came back to us as we were not expecting to be a single audit, which is federal expenditures more than $3,000, more than $500,000. We, because we were a single audit, they came back to us, requested a little bit additional funding because of the increase, that that particular scope of work increased. The, at the time, that's why the fee ended up being approximately $39,000. So the, the range, the range was a, there was a decent range between the prices from what was provided originally from the bids from previous year to what was eventually accepted.
Okay, Alderman Odom and Alderman White?
Mr. Sabatelli, the CAFR that the audit firms are required to perform, are they pretty standard?
The, yes. They vary depending on the, on the entity. However, we have, there is a set of standards that have to be followed according to the Government Accounting Standards Board. If you have a proprietary fund, you are required to have certain information provided. If you have a, if you have a, just a general fund, you have to provide certain information. If you have a pension, you're required to provide certain information. The standards are the standards, and it's basically who provides those standards at the, you know, at a good quality.
So, so there's guidelines that each firm regardless would have to adhere to?
That's correct.
When preparing the audit?
That's correct.
And Dixon Hughes Goodman, I'm seeing their office is High Point. Is that their closest office?
I'm not sure if that's their hi- their closest office or not. I believe it might be from 100%.
And last time, they were not the cheapest, but we decided to go with them based off of the recommendation to go with a more.
Yes, sir. We, yes, sir. What happened when we go through this process? We have score sheets. Myself, my accounting manager, and our warehouse purchasing manager, three of us scored those, scored the proposals that were provided. Dixon Hughes did score, did score the highest compared to the other two firms. Thank you.
Alderman White?
Yeah, my question is, the auditor that we have, do you find any errors in his work or their work?
Yes, sir. We, it's my understanding, I was not, I was not here at the time. The previous auditor had prepared the financial statements, but it was my understanding that there were a large number of errors as far as, I believe it was more for rushing to get the financial statements done. I don't want to make excuses for anything that anybody did previously since I wasn't here. But I do know that there were some errors, and the number of errors in preparation with financial statements were substantially less than previous years.
And JR, this is not pushing off on you, but when we, that person came and did an audit for us, I asked a question, if there's any problem, if there is any errors. And I asked, and maybe a couple of people here might remember, I said, would you let the board know? Now, if there are errors and we don't know anything about it, I mean, I'm not expecting to know everything about what's going on. But I didn't know, but who else ever didn't know? I know this is part of, part of your job, but we need to know what's going on.
Yeah, and when I'm talking, when I'm talking about errors on the, when I'm talking about errors, I'm talking about errors in the preparation of the financial statements. A, a number of words miss, some misspelling of words, numbers placed in the wrong, in the wrong slot, a, a couple of numbers combined together that should actually be broken apart and, rather than listed together, things of that nature.
Okay, like Alderman Kinsey was saying, how many people did we look at? How many people?
For this process, we have, we just received the proposal from the firm that we were, that we stuck with. We received it from the previous year. When the audits are, when an RFP is done, it's the intention to retain the same firm over the next two, over the next couple of years. That is, when they, that's why when they provide us with the proposal, they ti- they provide us with an estimate of the subsequent two years' worth of activity, or worth of fees that they expect to be charging. This fee is definitely higher than the fee that they had originally proposed to us.
Yeah, we, we also, when we first came on board, the auditors that they had, I think they've had it for a while, and my suggestion was that we give another person a chance to audit, and that's why we was doing some of what we were doing. But if no more applied than that, I, I think we should at least try to get some more people to look at it.
And, and that's, that's absolutely fine if that's what you all choose to do. I'm happy to do an RFP for it. Like I said, it's ready to go.
No problem at all. I just like more people to look at.
Alderman Blackston?
Yes, sir, Mayor. Mr. Sabatelli, I, I don't know that it makes any difference in terms of where they're necessarily located, but what is the size of an audit team that comes in and works? And what is their typical schedule in terms of the man hours that they would spend for a municipality's sector hours?
It, it depends on the, it depends on the, it depends on the experience of the auditors that they're, that they're bringing in. Sometimes they will bring in, they will bring in younger staff that are, you know, I won't say fresh out of college, but they'll bring in younger staff members that they, that they hired. And they typically bill them out at a lower rate, obviously. You're not going to bill a, someone who's fresh out of college or an intern at $200 an hour where you would bill a little partner. So the hours and the, and the time actually will vary based on that. In, in audit of this size, you know, you're talking, you're talking about three to four people for two to three weeks.
Okay, and is, is that, that time spent, is that involve multiple trips or is that one continuous period?
That would, that would actually end up being multiple trips. They would come, they would probably, they would likely come down for an actual, what we call field work, and basically come here physically to our offices for, you know, for two weeks and maybe a day or two additional. And then they would go back to their offices to prepare the financial statements, which, and to clean up any, and do some reviews of the, of the work that was provided, performed by the field staff. A partner has to go through and review all the work papers to make sure that nothing was overlooked, that the procedures that the auditors performed were appropriate. So there, there, it always jokes that, you know, that it takes three accounts to screw the light bulb and a fourth one to review it, so that, because that's what we did, that's how they tend to do it. So if, so when you're, when I'm talking three weeks, it says it's two, two weeks and plus a couple, day or two and then the other possibly another week in the office.
Well, I guess my question, in this day of, of computers everywhere, do they leave and take with them source documents from our, from our data files that they work with offsite at their offices?
Actually, part of, one of the things that we do do is we actually will scan in documents, and we will email them to them, or they have some, some audit firms, and I believe this firm does as well, have a, have a web portal that we can actually upload documents to, so that we'll upload the source documents to them electronically so they can, and some of the work at the offices.
I guess the concern that I share with Alderman Kinsey is that if someone comes in, gives you an, an estimate, makes a, a proposal, and then has to subsequently increase that by 25% because the scope of, they did, they did not identify the scope of work that was necessary to complete the audit. That gives me some concerns in terms of, of their ability to focus and project what is necessary to get done.
Yes, sir, and I completely understand that. They, they had looked at the previous fees that we were paying and based some of what their fee proposal was off of what pre- what previous years was paid, which is basically a practice of many auditors out there. They'll look at what, they'll look at what was done by the previous audit firm, and they'll, and they'll also look at the financial statements and things of that nature to help base their fee off of those items.
So what you're in essence saying is that they use the previous auditor's documents as source documents to review the work that they needed to do? They didn't necessarily consider all of the scope of work that had to be done involving, I guess, enterprise funds as well, obviously?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. That is, that is actually one of, that's actually one of the things that auditors do tend to do when coming in, particularly, you know, what I want to say, cold on an audit, because you don't necessarily know as clearly what you're going to get into until you truly get into it. I, I do know that it takes, you know, it, once you get through the first year, that's when you have a better understanding because you're following, you're, you're following your own work papers, you're following yourself, you have, you've already, you've gained that experience with that client. Just like having a consultant come in, they have to go through and review stuff they provided with an estimate, but they don't necessarily know all the, all the details that's going to be involved in an activity before, when they get, when they come in.
The audit contract in this case and every case commences on the 30th of June, and then they report out to us, as I recall, sometime in October. Is that?
Yes, sir.
Pretty much. Okay. I, I do have concerns when we're talking about a 25% increase in one year, and it would be my suggestion that we consider another RFP.
Yes, sir.
So, Mr. Sabatelli, this firm here broke off more than they can shoot. Second, the mistakes that you said that you had mentioned earlier, was these the mistakes this company made?
Uh, no, sir.
Okay.
Yeah. Like I said, they were just, like I said, they were, we're not talking about errors, we're talking like typos.
Who, who, who made those errors?
Previous auditors.
Okay.
And, and those were caught by staff that, in terms of reviewing the financial statements prior to them, prior to them being issued.
And I understand you have to get into something and realize what it takes to do it. But as you said, he took the, that firm took the information from a previous firm to make a bid on a project, and now, a year later, they want almost double, or $10,000 more.
Yes, sir.
And I just don't, I don't agree with that. So then second, as Alderman Kinsey and Alderman Blackston and Alderman White said, how many people, how, how many people? How many bids came in? How many, how the bids go out? How many did we get versus that one? It looked like we were just sticking with this one because they did it last year. I think we need to reach out further and get more bids in, because I don't, $10,000 jump on one, on, on, I don't agree with that.
Alderman Taylor, I don't, I don't disagree with you on the jump. However, I, I do know the reason I believe that the city in past years has tried to stick with an auditor for a couple of years is because you, that auditor city team gains knowledge over the time that they're here, and you don't want to just every year turn that over and, and transfer that to someone else where you're almost starting from scratch with a brand new auditor every year, where they're learning our city, our processes, our funds, et cetera.
I, I, I agree with, I understand what you're saying, ma'am, but if, if that's the, that's the procedure, that's probably, Goodman probably knows that. So if they're going to be in a contract for at least five years or whatever the case may be, a $10,000 jump this year, $10,000 jump next year, after a while, we could have to audit $150,000, $60,000 for one audit when that's just way out of ballpark. You still talk about tax paid money. It's the tax paid money. Forty-one, $2,000, $1,000 jump every year, increase, slowly increase, I agree with it. But $10,000, just like that, what are they going to do, $20,000 next year? My comment.
Alderman Odom?
Mr. Sabatelli, you said you had an RFP prepared to go out?
Yes, sir.
Is that a one-year?
Uh, no, we are, we are setting that up to provide for a one-year with two option years and that we would lock them in price going into the next two years. We are looking to, if we go this route, I do need to double check with the LGC regarding some of the language. However, I believe we are, I believe we're okay. I did find out recently, I'd previously been told that the LGC will only approve one contract year at a time. However, when I was told that, the, by the LGC, they failed to expand that we can contract with a firm for more, for multiple years. However, they, their approval is only one year at a time, so.
Is, is there some sort of escalation clause or cap based off CPI or something in that RFP? Or is it just left up to the bidder?
It's, it's left up to the bidder at this point.
Alderman White?
What Alderman Taylor was talking about, and what the young lady mentioned over there was a reason. When we first came on board, and I said that we need to switch, be able to change all the auditors every three years. And that's why I said, I asked the gentleman if there was a problem, would he tell us? Because the previous auditor, auditor that some other cities had was, was in a bind or things were totally wrong, and the board, their board didn't really know until it was too late.
Yes, sir.
So that was the reason I asked the question, and, and I think back then, they kept the auditor, we kept them for a while, but then they kept them for three years. And I thought every three years would be a good time to try to come up with, for somebody to replace that auditor.
Yes, sir. It's, it's actually good to periodically look towards possibly replacing your auditor. I shouldn't say replacing, but, you know, bidding out the services just because, you know, the fees change, auditors change, things like that. One of the things that I will, that I will mention, it's PCAOB, it's the Public Company Accounting Oversight Board, which is started by the federal government. They require publicly traded companies to, to change audit partners every three years. Not necessarily audit firm, but the audit partners. So however, those standards do not apply to us as a government. It's just, they just don't, the way they set it up. So however, regardless, it is good to periodically change those, or to bid it out and see what fees you get.
Mr. Sabatelli, just so we're comparing apples to apples, can you explain to the board whether the scope of the audit from fiscal year 15 to fiscal year 16 has changed at all? Are there any new federal requirements or new state requirements that would be levied this year's, for this year's audit?
One of the things that has, one of the things that has changed regarding the, regarding the federal audit portion is that the, the amount of, amount of federal expenditures has increased from $500,000 to $750,000 to require a single audit. The state also did the same thing related to, related to the state's single audit requirements. So those, so those items will, will take, there will be an impact there. There also, there are also a couple of accounting standard changes that will need to be looked at to see if they, if they're going to apply in this current, for this current fiscal year, which will tend to cause increases.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we extend or release the RFP that Mr. Sabatelli has prepared for next year's upcoming fiscal year.
Second. Yeah, motion second, under discussion. I was always, I was a little concerned that we only, I think, had three bids. I mean, we're, we're not the largest city in North Carolina, we're certainly not the smallest. I just want to make sure that while we're doing that, that we are ma- making sure that we're going through all the channels of how that would be, the proposals will go out. Is there, is there something that we missed last time that we could make sure everybody's getting an opportunity to know that we're looking for a proposal?
No, sir. We published it on the state, we published it on the, there's a state procurement website, I believe, that my procurement manager put out there for me. We also sent it directly to several firms. So we, we did, and I believe it was on the city's website as well. So we did everything that we could in order to solicit, to solicit bids.
Mr. Sabatelli?
Yes, sir.
What, in your estimate, how many firms are capable of performing this audit that are within, say, 50 miles, 75 miles, 50 miles of New Bern?
Gosh, sir, I, I'm not 100% sure. I do know there, there is a firm within the city of New Bern, and I believe there are several other, there are probably like four or five other firms, maybe, that within the, if you're standing out of radius, that you're discussing, that you're talking about it. I'm not overly familiar with all of the firms in this state, as I'm going to continue to learn about them. So as we go through this process, that's why, you know, we are learning about people who do firms themselves.
Well, I think the members of this board should share the, the desire to, to provide business to local companies and local firms, realizing, of course, that they have to be competitive in their, in their services and, and activities that they provide them.
Absolutely, absolutely. And one, one of the things that I always say, that I saw you related to audits, as a matter of fact, ironically, I got a text from one of my tech, staff members earlier. He was at a training in Chapel Hill today, and one of the things that immediately came, came up was, be careful not to focus solely on the price of the audit, but also on the quality. Price is a, is a big factor, obviously, but also you've got to focus on the quality of the firm that you're getting, which is why we go through a, and we go through several categories to score out the audit themselves to make sure that, to ensure that the price is not the only factor.
Does, does the fact that the, the audit period is for the fiscal year that we have, does that present too much competitive requirements that some firms would already be eliminated? That they've got too much work on their, on their desktops?
That is, uh, partially the case, I believe that, well, we partially went into last year, but some firms did have too much work on it late and, uh, because there are, the requirement is that the audits need to be completed typically by October thirty-first, so you only have a few months to get that completed.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Yes, sir.
Uh, what is the earliest that you sent out, uh, proposals to a company? What is the earliest and the latest?
It, it could be done early at just about any time, I mean, I could, we could do it a little bit, or we could do it earlier if needed, if need be.
I mean, give me, give me a time, January, December, uh, I mean, give me a time.
Let me see, it's probably, uh, probably February.
February, and then how soon do you expect it back?
Uh, so in this particular instance, I'll be expecting it back within two weeks, uh, with the, with something like that, I'd probably give a little bit, a little bit more time, probably about, uh, three weeks.
What I'm saying is, we can get it out a little early, we won't have to go through this type of situation here, uh, looking at numbers. We can get it done early and get out the, the number of, of, of proposals to the right people that give each, and then just each and every individual a chance to bid, you know, uh... That's a long ways, you know, we have companies all around us and like, uh, uh, Blackiston said that, you know, let's deal with the local people, you know, let's serve our co- economy and let's build it up. Let, let, let's look at that.
Okay. Okay, any other questions, comments? This time, let's have a roll call on this item, uh, starting with Alderman Blackiston.
Alderman Blackiston?
Yes.
Alderman Taylor?
Yes.
Alderman Shabel? Mayor Outlaw?
Yes.
Alderman Kenzie?
No.
Alderman White?
One question, we were talking about extending the person that's...
The, the motion is to send out the RFP.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, I wouldn't...
Not to approve the audit contract.
I want to.
You wanna change your vote?
I wanna change my vote, I wanna change my vote, yes. I was thinking about...
Alderman Odom?
Yes.
Okay, Alderman White?
Yes.
Alderman Odom?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries.
Thank you, I'll have that out soon more.
Item number nine, consider adopting an ordinance amending the entitlement city's community development block grant fund.
Mayor, members of the board, in September two thousand thirteen, the board adopted a resolution authorizing the pursuit of community development block grant, CDBG, entitlement city status. This status would allow us to receive funds through an annual allocation rather than having to compete with other small cities and counties. The city has since received the entitlement city status and has been awarded funds totaling five hundred and ten thousand, seven hundred and thirty-nine dollars. The proposed budget ordinance acknowledges receipt of these funds and the proceeds will be used for improvements to infrastructure, housing, rehabilitation, public improvements, affordable housing, planning, and administration.
Okay, yes, sir.
Well, you all know every time this comes up, uh, how important it is for our community and I'll always be the one that talks about it. Uh, CDBG grant funds are funds that we definitely need not let go by. Um, so, there are not any more questions, any questions? Anybody else? I'd like to make a motion that we, hold on, I'm trying, adopt a budget ordinance amending FY two thousand, oop.
Number nine.
Backup one, adopt the, make a motion, adopt an ordinance amending the entitlement city's community development block grant fund.
Second. Motion by Alderman Taylor, seconded by Alderman Blackiston, is a further discussion. CNN will have a roll call starting with Alderman Odom.
Alderman Odom?
Yes.
Alderman White?
Yes.
Alderman Kenzie?
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw?
Yes.
Alderman Shabel? Alderman Taylor?
Yes.
Alderman Blackiston?
Yes.
Motion carries, item number ten, consider adopting a budget ordinance amendment for fiscal year twenty fifteen, sixteen, annual budget.
Mayor, members of the board, um, as you remember, the sale of power generating assets through Nekempa resulted in lower wholesale electric rates on July first, two thousand fifteen, and the respective reduction in the city's retail rates effective September one, two thousand fifteen. This resulted, resulted in additional cash of one point three million and some change. At its February ninth, two thousand sixteen, regular meeting, the board elected to return the additional funds generated from this timing difference to the customers over a two-year period by enacting a one point twenty-five percent electric rate reduction. The attached, or the requested budget ordinance accounts for the transfer of these funds from the electric fund to the rate stabilization fund during the current fiscal year so that they can be utilized during the FY seventeen, during FY seventeen and then in the future in FY eighteen. Happy to answer any questions you might have on that.
Some board have questions?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion, we adopt the amendment to FY sixteen, electric fund and rate stabilization fund.
Second. Motion by Alderman Odom, seconded by Alderman Kenzie, is a further discussion. CNN, let's have a roll call, starting with Alderman Blackiston.
Alderman Blackiston?
Yes.
Alderman Taylor?
Yes.
Alderman Shabel? Mayor Outlaw?
Yes.
Alderman Kenzie?
Yes.
Alderman White?
Yes.
Alderman Odom?
Yes.
Motion carries, item number eleven, consider adopting a budget ordinance amendment, excuse me, um, consider adopting a resolution approving a lease agreement with poultry in motion LLC.
Mayor, members of the board, uh, you might remember the April twenty-sixth, two thousand sixteen meeting, the board adopted a resolution approving a lease agreement with Preservation Management, Inc. This was for, um, the residents of Craven Terrace to establish a Craven Terrace Green Team, which was youths from five to seventeen years old to plant and maintain a vegetable garden. The city and the group identified a, a, a parcel, uh, for them to, to lease at a cost of one dollar for a six-month period from April first, two thousand sixteen to October thirty-first, two thousand sixteen. However, after approval of the lease, Preservation Management requested some minor changes and that the lease be in the name of poultry in motion LLC, so the lease has been revised to reflect this, the cost and the term remain the same. Happy to answer any questions.
Alderman Odom.
Mr. Davis, what were the changes that they requested other than their name?
Um, three or four, uh, more grammatical-type changes, um, for example, in the introduction, um, rather than saying, uh, buy in between, they prefer buy in among, things like that. Uh, there were three or four of those, and then we clarified, um, any liability for environmental issues to make it clear that they take the property as it is, um, and conversely, if they cause any environmental damage, they'll be responsible for anything like that. Of course, it will just be a garden, but nonetheless, they wanted that to be clarified, which is not a problem. The bigger issue was simply wanting to change the parties.
Other questions?
Yes, Ms. Color, uh, do, what, what department will be providing the oversight for this? Does this fall into Parks and Rec or Public Works or is there anyone identified to basically follow up with the, uh, some of the conditions that Mr. Davis just mentioned?
I'm gonna look at staff for some help on that one.
And, and Alderman Blackiston, this lease will terminate at the end, at, at the end of the current growing season, which I believe we called the end of October of this year. So, this is a very short-term lease to allow them to have a garden for this growing season while their property's under construction.
Right, well, I guess part of my question is to do with the fact that, uh, that in some of the community gardens, they have actually created raised beds. If the property is, is kinda low, low elevation, um, is that in fact what's happening here? And will that material be removed or just held in place for another growing season?
Yes, sir, we, we don't know what they'll do to the property, but it'll, it will be returned in, in, in the current condition that it's in right now.
Other questions?
So, they're not taking responsibility, is what they're saying, is that correct, sir?
Well, their appropriate concern is if there is some contamination on the property that they didn't cause that exists right now, obvi- obviously, they would have no liability for that. And conversely, if, if they were to damage the property in some way, they would be responsible for it.
Okay.
All right, Mr. Player, our board?
Members of the board, I'd like to make a motion that we adopt a resolution approving a lease agreement with poultry in motion for the purposes of creating a community garden for the residents of Craven Terrace.
Second. Motion by Alderman Blackiston, seconded by Alderman Kenzie, is a further discussion. CNN will have a roll call, starting with Alderman Odom.
Alderman Odom?
Yes.
Alderman White?
Yes.
Alderman Kenzie?
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw?
Yes.
Alderman Shabel? Alderman Taylor?
Yes.
Alderman Blackiston?
Yes.
Motion carries, item number twelve, consider adopting a resolution awarding the contract for Township Seven Sewer Improvement Project.
Mayor, members of the board, due to the limited capacity of the city's step sewer system, a reduction in system users will be required in order to ensure that the New Bern Seven Treatment Facility operates within its permit limitations in upcoming years. To accomplish this reduction, approximately eleven hundred step system users will need to be transferred to the city's conventional sewer system. To facilitate the transfer, a new sanitary sewer infrastructure will need to be constructed in the Township Seven area. The proposed infrastructure will also be utilized to expand the conventional sewer system coverage area and will reduce overall system operating pressures leading to reduced maintenance costs. After a competitive bid process, the, um, staff recommends awarding the contract for fiscal year sixteen to Step Construction, Inc., for six hundred and eight thousand, three hundred and eighteen dollars, which was actually below the engineer's original estimate. Uh, staff and I are happy to answer any questions you might have on this issue.
How many bids was put out for this?
I believe we had, uh, five responses. Is that right, Jordan, we had five responses?
I have it right here, I'm sorry, I have it right here.
Yep.
Thank you. So, why did you pick that guy, Jordan?
Uh, they were, they were the low bidder. And they, they were the low bidder out of the five and no reason to con- not consider their bid, they, they were the lowest responsible and responsive bidder we had.
And where are they located?
Uh, I think they, they do work all across eastern of Carolina, their, their main office, I believe, is in Magrange.
Magrange, okay. That's all I have, thank you.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we adopt a resolution awarding the contract for Township Seven Sewer Improvement Project for FY sixteen, two steps construction.
Second. Motion by Alderman Odom, seconded by Alderman Blackiston, is a further discussion. CNN, let's have a roll call, starting with Alderman Blackiston.
Alderman Blackiston?
Yes.
Alderman Taylor?
Yes.
Alderman Shabel? Mayor Outlaw?
Yes.
Alderman Kenzie?
Yes.
Alderman White?
Yes.
Alderman Odom?
Yes.
Motion carries, item number thirteen, consider adopting a resolution approving the submission of recreational trails program twenty seventeen grant application.
Mayor, members of the board, the city has been invited to submit a recreational trails program two thousand seventeen grant application for the New Bern Greenway River Walk project. If received, funds will be used to enhance the existing and proposed section of the greenway. The portion of the greenway may also be considered as a designated section of the North Carolina Mountains to See Trail. The total cost of the project is estimated at fifty-six thousand dollars, anticipated grant funds are forty-two thousand with a twenty-five percent cash ma- cash match of fourteen thousand from the city. An area map showing the proposed River Walk Greenway extension is in your packet. Um, if approved, we will come back with a budget amendment, uh, to realign funds that are identified in the fiscal sixteen budget for grant matches. Happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Some board have questions?
Where, where would those funds be pulled from?
Actually, we have money budgeted to, uh, transfer from other funds that are already in existence, uh, and this, this won't be awarded likely until FY seventeen, so we've got money budgeted, uh, transferred to grant funds already set aside for this type of activity. Well, we'll come back with this, uh, budget amendment to, uh, accept the grant and realign accordingly.
Board have questions?
Yeah, one.
Yes, sir.
It's back to JR. What funds would that, the money come out of this budget?
Yeah, we've already got, we already have the money budgeted from, to come from the general fund, yeah, and it's going to go into the grant.
Okay, it was a pleasure, board, on this item.
Uh, just one last question.
Yes.
Is this, is this to complete the program that we already have in place, is this to help complete that river walk, correct? It's not a new addition or a new project?
It's a continuation of the river walk.
Okay. Thank you. Mayor, I want members of the board, I'd like to make a motion that we adopt a resolution to submit a recreational trails program, twenty seventeen grant application.
Sir.
Motion by Alderman Blackiston, seconded by Alder- Alderman Taylor, is a further discussion. CNN, let's have a roll call, starting with Alderman Odom.
Alderman Odom?
Yes.
Alderman White?
Yes.
Alderman Kenzie?
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw?
Yes.
Alderman Shabel? Alderman Taylor?
Yes.
Alderman Blackiston?
Yes.
Motion carried. Okay, uh, still with appointments, starting with Alderman Odom, do you have any tonight, sir?
No, sir.
Alderman White?
Appointment?
Appointment?
Yes, sir, I have one. The one I have is for the Community, Community Development Advisor Committee. I have Roger Double Bellamy.
All right.
I have his address and his phone number, I give it to you on its opening, I can give it to you right as spread out there.
I'll take it from you, please.
Okay, thirty-two oh four, Yaw Court.
Have a second, is that motion?
Sir.
You heard the motion?
Go ahead, I'll give a phone number later.
Okay. Okay, you have a motion and a second, is there further discussion? CNN, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the same. Mr. White, do you have anything else to say on that?
No, sir.
Do you have any other appointments, sir?
No, sir.
Okay. Alderman Kenzie?
No, sir.
I have none tonight, Alderman Shabel.
Wake up.
Alderman Shabel, do you have any appointments?
No, I don't.
Alderman Taylor?
Yes, sir, I'd like to reappoint Beaty Bell to the farm, New Bern Farmers and Boards.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second, is there further discussion? CNN, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the same. Motion carries. Uh, Alderman Blackiston?
No, sir, don't have it this time.
All right, this time, we're gonna have attorneys report?
Nothing to report tonight, mayor.
City managers report?
Nothing to report from a business side, Mr. Stevens, uh, sends his regrets, he's at an important, uh, graduation for one of his youngsters tonight, so...
Let's go to new business, starting with Alderman Blackiston.
Nothing, sir.
Alderman Taylor?
Yes, sir. Um, got an email the other day, a very important announcement. Free lunch for the community. Free lunch for, uh, for all summer for children in our community. Uh, three different sites, one site is Vanceboro Farm Life Elementary, Havelock High School, and Trent Park Elementary. All sites will be open June the thirteenth, two thousand sixteen, all sites will close August the eighteenth, two thousand sixteen. Days open Monday to Thursday, time is from eleven AM until food is out or doors closed at one PM. Uh, Vanceboro Farm Life will close, will open from twelve fifteen to one fifteen, sponsored by the Craven County Schools, who are able to attend ages from one to eighteen. Uh, parents must be, uh, anyone under the age of thirteen must have a parent accompany them. Uh, if you want any information, you can contact Ca- Kathy, Katie Exum, school nutrician, uh, nutrician, food server, summer food service supervisor. Her phone number is five one four, six three, six zero. Katie Exum, five one four, six three, six zero. Very important information, as I spoke on earlier, last meeting, there's a lot of kids that go hunger, hungry in our community and the surrounding communities. Um, Jones County, Pampers County, Craven County, we have a big problem with homeless kids, homeless adults, and also residents, people going home on a daily basis. So, this right, this program is a wonderful program, it is totally free, both three areas, Vanceboro, Farm Life Elementary, Havelock High School, and Trent Park Elementary. Thank you very much, that's all I have.
Okay. Um, Alderman Shabel, do you have any new business tonight?
Alderman Shabel, do you have any new business other than what the mayor has to announce for you?
Okay, uh, go ahead, Alderman Kenzie, I'll, I'll go last.
Okay, um, July the nineteenth, um, we will have our work session at, uh, Public Works, uh, Department, which is on Glen Burnie Road. So, I just wanted to make that announcement there.
Got anything else?
Uh, I don't think so at this moment, sir.
Okay. Alderman White? Alderman White?
Only thing I have is a report that I probably give Matt, and that's about dealing with Wolford Street and Watson. There were some work that needed to be done, and it was done, but it's got rock there, and I know soon and later they're gonna resurface some little spots. One is in the curve, it's a bigger, it's a deeper hole now, but it's a big part that was cut out, but some work that y'all probably done. I know y'all did and no one else did, so, but you haven't resurfaced it yet, and I guess you got a certain date that you'll be able to do that. It's on Wolford Street and the curve on Watson Street. Yeah, real bad. Appreciate that. Other than that, I'm working, I'm working with Mark about some light that need to be put up, so we can get back with that.
Alderman Odom?
Yes, sir. Matt, do you have an update, by chance, and I'm putting you on the spot, as far as DOT and finishing Trent Road? I know we're supposed to, that's supposed to be completed before we actually take possession of Trent Road. Do you have any idea of where they are with that?
We'll take that.
Thank you.
I've seen a pre-bid meeting with several DOT officials and other utility representatives about two weeks ago, and I think they're preparing to let the contract and basically put out the bid, DOT terms, before the end of their fiscal year, which I think runs a month behind ours. So sometime this summer, they'll let the contract with anticipation of we're trying to get that done this calendar year. I still think there's a few utility conflicts they're trying to work out with some telecommunication companies, but by and large, all the other, most of the major utility conflicts have already been addressed or because they've been relocated, and they've found a way to navigate around them.
Thank you. And then, last question, maybe while Matt's coming up, the Triumph Palace improvements behind Triumph Palace, when do we expect those to be complete?
I was expecting, y'all asked me about the bridge.
Nah, I didn't want to go there, but.
The, I will give you a quick update. The bridge is supposed to be completed before Memorial Day weekend, so hopefully by week seven, that'll be complete. Triumph Palace, they finished up the sidewalk this week here, and the plan is to start doing the sod and landscaping Friday and early next week, and hopefully by the end of next week, the paving contractor will be in to take care of that. Paving contractor's been there daily, he's waiting for his turn, but now the sidewalk has been completed. We'll do the landscaping first and then pave.
While you're up, we do get a lot of calls and questions from residents about some of the projects. Thanks for updating on that one. The Third Avenue and anything else around Newbern that you can, one thing that residents really want to know about us, when is the DOT gonna be through with the bridge surfacing and those type things? If you could just kind of go through everything that's going on in Newbern right now and timetable.
Try to give you a quick update. As I said, the bridge contract that DOT is working on now, they're, I talked to DOT last week, they're anticipating being done hopefully by this Friday before the Memorial Day weekend and the beach traffic, so hopefully you'll see that wrapping up. The Third Avenue Extension Project has been designed, completed, bid out. We have a contractor in line, ready to go. We do have one little property issue we're trying to attain that Scott's been working on, and as soon as that property issue has been taken care of, that project will begin. Hardy Construction will be the contractor for that one. The paving contractor, the two thousand sixteen paving contract, eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars that has been approved is scheduled to begin within the next week or two. Working on several other projects that are in works. We're working on the River Walk Extension down behind the Sudan property. Hopefully, we'll get that going here in the next, probably next month or two.
And then the Lawson Creek.
We are finishing up the designs. Matter of fact, Mark and I are meeting Thursday with the engineer for the Lawson Creek Park entry redesign to actually review the final plans and make any revisions to that that are necessary, so that we can send that out to bid as soon as possible. But as far as that goes, we have received the encroachment agreement through NC DOT to replace the old chain link fence that runs along Highway seventy in the entrance to Lawson Creek Park. So we'll, we actually received that, we've bidded that project out, and we have a fencing contractor ready to go. He's actually ordered the material and expects to start in the next three weeks on that.
And is our Bashville Bridge back up and running okay?
I'll say it one time.
Cunningham Bridge, is it working okay?
I drove over it on my way to the meeting tonight, and it was functioning properly.
Okay, does anybody on board have any questions about any of the projects that you want to, that you've had questions about? I'll get you this second. Go ahead.
I want to thank you for taking care of the intersection on Colony Drive and News Boulevard.
Yes, sir.
And all the right-of-ways on Race Track Road. Thank you so very much for taking care of that.
Alderman Taylor?
Yes, I got two quick things, mayor. Mr. Phil, I want to thank you for coming out to a meeting tonight. I speak to the community all the time, and I tell the community it's very important to come downtown and attend a city meeting from time to time, so you learn how your city operates. Instead of hearing it in the street, you actually come here and find out what's going on and why it's going on. Again, thank you for coming out. The second thing is homeowners. If you're local or if you're out of state, please take care of your, if it's your house, your property, please groom it, maintain it, because there's a lot of properties in the community that's been neglected, and we have to have inspections go out and spend a lot of time sending you letters, and it also takes away from your community if you don't take care of your property. We will send you a letter, and we will make it happen, one way or the other. So I wanted to put out that the homeowners locally, please take care of your property. Even though you don't live there, you got a property on the other side of town, take care of your property. If you're not locally, make sure you have someone to take care of your property. You can cut your grass in five minutes and take two dollars worth of gas versus the city going to do it and bill you. Once they bill you, then you call me, and I have to go back and forth with why the prices so high. Take time out, take care of your property, beautify your community, keep your community up. And if the homeowner is deceased and it's air property, air property, either sell it or maintain it, because you will get, we will notify you about the property. It happens all the time, and I'm getting calls every other day about grass growing three to four feet high, and the people live right here in the community. Unsatisfactory. Again, thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor, members of the board, I was remiss. I do have one item. I'd like to introduce a very important but temporary member of the city team. We have a two-week intern with us, and she is here tonight. Her name is Emily Kester. Emily is coming to us as a recently finished freshman at the University of North Carolina. She, she's studying environmental studies, and so we've had her ride along with one of our police officers, do some GIS floodplain mapping work. She spent a day with the utility business office, learning about our AMI initiative. And then this week is dedicated to, she's working on a project on a potential eco-walk for our residents along the Jack Smith Creek wetlands, so I wanted to introduce her. Emily, glad to have you.
Welcome to Newbern. Alderman Odom, do you have something?
Yeah, just one last comment on the business to wrap that up. Just wanted to thank staff for their work with the budget this year. I know it's always a trying time, but over the last three years that we've had a part of it, you know, great job taking direction well, as difficult as it may be at sometimes. I know you'd all like to have more money, we all would, but we've done a great job with what you have to work with and taking care of citizens and being frugal with their money, so I appreciate your efforts.
Okay. Now, did you, you got anything?
Thank you, sir.
I do want to, I want to recognize one more person. The young man right here, I know your father, can't remember your name. Yes. Gil, his dad's named Deacon Frank Gil. He's been out here throughout meetings several times. This is what we need in the community more, young people coming out and understanding. He's very, been very assertive, he's been attentive. Last time he was sitting over here. So he's very interested in city government, so continue to do what you do. Thank you very much.
Okay. Did have a couple of new business items. Wanted to thank Matt and your staff on the open house you had. I think that was in conjunction with a national public works open house, and it's a great opportunity if you didn't get a chance, you missed an opportunity to see our new public works building and all the equipment and everything. Wanted to announce that the Newbern Health Slide seven sixty-four is having the Flag Day Ceremony, History of Our Flags, Saturday, June eleventh, eleven to twelve noon at Union Point at the gazebo, and it's just a really good opportunity to get some history on some of our earlier flags. And the other thing I wanted to mention to you is that ten o'clock on Friday, County Commissioner Tyson and myself and others, Billy Joyner with the Trent Woods Board and others, will be cleaning up over on Red Robin Lane. And so if you want to meet us over there, anybody wants to do that, we're gonna be kind of in a parking lot behind McDonald's there on Red Robin Lane. I want to mention to you that what we're finding, we're, we're getting a lot out of this, some volunteers that are, every Friday, we're trying to identify some real problematic stress areas around Newbern and Craven County, and we're discovering a lot of what you might say, social mores and things that are going on in our city, and most of them are not good. I think Alderman Taylor mentioned earlier that this, you know, the homeless situation is one thing, but high school homeless students is just, it's unbearable, and I don't know the solution, but, you know, it's just not one group gonna fix some of these things. And where I'm going with this is that on the litter, if you want a cleaner city, a city that you can be proud of, and I'm already getting people are saying that they think Newbern's a little bit cleaner, it's not gonna be, it's not gonna be the county and their program that they have, and the, it's not gonna be Steve Tyson and others picking trash up on Friday mornings. It's not gonna be that we put some trash cans in some really stressed litter areas. It's not gonna be that when a resident calls and says that there's a whole neighborhood that would like to clean up, would you bring a dumpster out? Yes, we'll do it. It's not gonna be fining people, but it's gonna be, as we're discovering, identifying sources of litter. It's not gonna be correcting the tarp problem on the trash trucks going out to the landfill in Tuscarora. These are all things that we're identifying is what the cause is, but, you know, it's kind of a cause and effect thing. Do you work on the effect, which is the litter, and that is cleaning it up, or do you work on the cause? And so as we continue to identify the problems, the one thing that I want the board to consider at a workshop or at a future meeting is, I think you're gonna find along the lines that one thing that we're gonna have to do, which is a little bit more work on our police department, our sheriff's department, is that we have talked with the district attorney's office, we've talked with the resident judges, and we've talked with the sheriff's department, we've talked with the police department, and I think that all these groups are willing to do their part along with everything else I've talked about, and that's gonna be a fine. And there's, it's probably, if I had a vote tonight, it would be a fifty-dollar fine, and it's, it's gonna be what it is, and it's just gonna be about a tenfold program, and one of them is gonna be some fines. One of them is gonna be that the signs are gonna be put in these areas that we find over by Outback's. You know, we picked up five syringes along, right there from Outback over to Cunningham Bridge a couple of frames ago. And so anyway, just think about that as a board, think about that as a city, and talk with your aldermen, give them your suggestions. We already have a couple of folks that are all in Riverside, nobody knows about it, but there's a silent, there's a silent crew of residents that are out there every morning with trash bags, and they've told us some things we can do to help them, that they have so much trash. Help me out on that. You know, you.
We don't have a lot of trash in Riverside because we stay on top of it.
Yeah.
And you're right, those volunteers are out there, and it's not only for litter pickup, but it's just part of an exercise program too. Some ride bikes, some walk, and we have folks in other parts of Ward One in particular that are out getting that exercise and basically policing up their own neighborhoods. So, but as we went to the litter symposium that Commissioner Tyson sponsored, that was one of the issues, that we need to get into the area, unfortunately, of fines and penalties for people that don't want to take care of their own trash. It doesn't fall out of the sky, it comes out of someone's hands or someone's pockets, and they're not being respectful of other people's lifestyles.
Well, that's all I want to say about that, and I just want the board to think about that as we go forward and keep our city cleaner so we can all be proud of it. Does anybody else have anything on a new business? Do we need a closed session tonight?
Not tonight, mayor.
Okay, is there anything else coming from the Newbern Board of Aldermen at this time?
Motion adjourned.
Second. Motion by Alderman, heard him seconded by Alderman Blackiston. Is there any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye. All opposed, the same.